Southern Tennessee Regional Health System. Pulaski is here to help you be well. Our mission is to make our community healthier and wear your community hospital. We're committed to providing trusted care when you need it most. From wellness checks to emergencies, we're here for you and your family. Visit us today at SouthernTennessee.com or call 931-363-7531.
When it comes to real estate, Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at 931-347-9150 or visit HaneyRealtyPem.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate. If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at M&amp;MStaffing.net or give us a call today at 931-347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're more than just an electric utility. We also offer internet TV and phone services. Our commitment to our customers and our community is what sets us apart. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit PESEnergize.com or call us today.
The natural gas department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to 50% to 60% less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
Southern Tennessee Regional Health System. Pulaski is here to help you be well. Our mission is to make our community healthier and wear your community hospital. We're committed to providing trusted care when you need it most. From wellness checks to emergencies, we're here for you and your family. Visit us today at SouthernTennessee.com or call 931-363-7531.
When it comes to real estate, Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at 931-347-9150 or visit HaneyRealtyPem.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate. If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at M&amp;MStaffing.net or give us a call today at 931-347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're more than just an electric utility. We also offer internet TV and phone services. Our commitment to our customers and our community is what sets us apart. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit PESEnergize.com or call us today.
The natural gas department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to 50% to 60% less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
This is, uh, I present a letter to that student which was included from BIS. That's our software company, software hardware company. And they increased the online fee to do online reviews from one dollar to two dollars. It's been one dollar since, uh, we started with them, I think in maybe 2005 or something. Anyway, um, this is a way for them to recruit money without making our payments more. They get an extra dollar when somebody reviews their tag online.
Any other questions? Take none, please vote.
The vote is nineteen eyes.
No motion carries. Okay, the next order of business is our several resolutions. The first is 2023-50. Uh, this resolution is based on a unanimous recommendation of the Financial Management Committee to write off approximately $900,000 in uncollectible accounts from the annual service. These are accounts that have already been through six years and attempted collections and are now considered uncollectible. The floor is open for a motion. Ms. Currie?
I agree with Ms. Lee.
And a second by Mr. Womble. Comments or discussion on this resolution? Yes, Mr. Rubelsky.
I'm just curious, um, in the future, is there any better procedures, protocol that we could do to address this of being able to collect these funds?
There's not a better process to collect these funds. We're at the point after six years of trying, we work with collection agencies. At this point, it's blood out of a rock.
No, I've, I've-
So, and so answer your question before the process goes, what the Financial Management Committee did approve and what you all just addressed, um, with their report, which is that we're gonna look at this on a, this will be a year basis from now on, we're not gonna do it. I think this one is for a two-year block of time, which is too long. We need to do it year by year so we can have some metrics as to what's happening year after year. Any other questions? Please vote. I'm sorry, now, now the questions come. Yes?
This, this is over, this cost me about nine hundred thousand dollars. That's over the entire six-year period. So, are we keeping like a hundred fifty thousand a year or is it big spots?
That, that's what's hard for us to measure because we haven't been looking at it in one, one-year blocks. Um, and I don't have the data for what you guys worked off last time. That's a good question. Yes, sir. Any other questions before we vote? Take sign, none, please vote.
The vote is nineteen eyes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next resolution, 2023-51. This resolution is also based on a unanimous recommendation of the Financial Management Committee, uh, as well as a recommendation from C to establish a county fund balance policy. The fund balance policy sets parameters around our fund balance to ensure long-term fiscal stability and preparedness for future needs. The recommended policy establishes a minimum fund balance of 25% of the previous fiscal year's budget expenditures with a target range, the ideal range of 40 to 50% of the previous year's budget expenditures. This ensures our fund balance is painlessly indexed for inflation. Um, you may have a question as to what is that percentage right now? And today it is at 55%. Fund balance as compared to last year's expenditures. So, the floor is open for a motion. Ms. Currie?
I agree with Ms. Lee.
And a second by Dr. Laker. Comments or discussions? Oh, is there a question? It takes us a while to get the software ready for a vote, so if you have questions, that's fine. Yes, Mr. Reed?
Yes, to me, we're going, maybe, we're, we're less than 10 million now in our fund balance. And you, and we said it's gonna be 50%, but it's a minimum of 25%. So, we're gonna be able to go down to like three or four million dollars.
Not without a lot of discussion, but the, the point is, is, uh, as we look at these mounting expenditures, whether it's this building or Ample's building, we needed to set some parameters around that fund balance. So, we may use some of it, and you may go all the way down to 25%. That's the absolute floor, but that would be negotiable between you all as the minimums. We're just saying, there's gotta be an absolute floor, particularly if we ever have to pursue borrowing. And then, uh, as we pursue borrowing, we wanna make sure that you've got some reserves, they give us the best possible rate. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. Uh, I see a lot of comments from the public, yes, uh, I do not want to say tax is raised until we use our pay or a big charter or something.
Right.
That's the, the, uh, idea, I think.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Hopkins?
Does this also require two-thirds, this is setting a policy?
No, this isn't a rule change.
Setting a policy, that's correct.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Womble. Is there currently a ruling? Is there currently a ruling placed regarding this? There's not? No. Is this a creation of a rule? I don't see it as a creation of a rule. This is budget policy. Rules are, ideally, your rules are supposed to be how we conduct our meetings. It's not a set policy. Any other questions?
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, what is the difference in your kind of budget policy and the rule?
But I think our rules are how we conduct our committee meetings and how we conduct this meeting. That's, that's what I understand the commission's rules to be. It guides the chair on how to conduct our meetings. Okay? So, will that, uh, please vote?
The vote is nineteen eyes.
The motion carries. Okay, the next resolution before you is 2023-52. This resolution is to revisit the provisional agreement made last year to see commission meetings. That provisional agreement expires next month. So, if the commission would like to make that be permanent, it will require a two-thirds approval to change Rule One. The proposal is to have a meeting scheduled for 5:00 PM for April through September and 9:00 AM for October through March. And that's the resolution as it's currently written, sponsored by Mr. Reed. The floor is open for a motion. Yes, Mr. Reed?
I make motion to approve.
And a second by Dr. Laker. And comments or discussion on this resolution? Yes, Mr. Fedora?
I wish there was a way I could ask for a show of hands from those who regularly attend these meetings. Do they prefer the nights? Do they like the six months on, six months off? Does it matter at all?
Well, if you're gonna ask the public to speak, we have to suspend the rules.
I haven't quite asked the public to speak. I'm just looking for a indication, some way that they like this rule. I get the sense that it does provide the public more opportunity to attend meetings if they want to.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion? And I'm gonna add, since there's a few, um, go ahead and use your tablet to request a speak. Mr. Adams, you're first, though.
I think we oughta have it the same year round. Instead of splitting it for the six months or six months.
So, would that be 5:00 PM year round or 9:00 AM?
I'm curious, I split it on one and leave.
Okay.
I'd rather have it nine. Just wanna know that every month and I gotta be down here at nine and then five or 12, 10, 11, and then the push turn and leave it there.
Yes, sir. Mr. Reed?
Okay, I guess my thoughts on this is not just, um, the standpoint of the meetings being good for the public, which I think it is, but I think it's good for some of the commissioners. Um, you know, as, uh, as, as I look at the makeup of our commission, traditionally, we've been made up of people that are retired or people that have, it's convenient for them to come at nine o'clock in the morning. And, and it's, um, uh, we need more people, greater mix of people that are in the middle of their career path. And, and we need to try to make it convenient for those that are out there that are thinking, I'd like to do that, but I can't commit to this at nine o'clock in the morning, to be able to, um, to get into the, the commission, you know, um, in my own work career. I've developed a theory, uh, which says, uh, everybody says that you can't teach an old dog new tricks, but old dogs can teach new dogs old tricks. So, the mix of experience and youth and technology gets you a good blend of people. And we need to set up a system where we encourage good people to come into the county and use their talents. So, that's one of my, uh, goals right there.
Thank you. Mr. Hopkins?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the times to 5:00 PM year round.
Okay, so we got a motion to amend the times to 5:00 PM. Is that a second? Yes. Okay. And there are comments or discussions on the amendment to change the times to 5:00 PM year round? Yes, Mr. Rubelsky?
I, I think when we originally did this, you know, we were looking for how much participation we would get, not from the commission, but how much we would get from, you know, the, the public. And I think it's, if there was a hot issue or something like that, we had good participation and was here, and I think we saw that, whether it was at nine or whether that was at five. I like Mr. Reed's comments of, uh, you know, trying to get other commissioners to, in the future, to participate and to have an opportunity to give to their community. And, um, I, I think the 5:00 PM allows that, and, um, I, I would like to see it set at 5:00 PM.
Okay? Okay, so we're still discussing the amendment to make it 5:00 PM consistently, Mr. Reed?
I personally also like the afternoon meetings and think it allows the public a little more opportunity to attend. And to Mr. Reed's points, I agree 100%. I think one financial question I have is, do we know, have we been able to quantify how much overtime to the deputies that have to stay over? I think that was at least a question early on.
Seventy-five dollars per meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, the question was, what, what's the cost of, uh, security? And just, we're, we're basing on, on the average time that we meet is about seventy-five dollars per meeting. Okay, Ms. Jones?
Point of clarification, is that whether it's in the daytime or at night?
No, ma'am, that's for the evening.
Extra.
Yes. Yeah, 5:00 PM is overtime.
And that's for just one deputy or?
That's one.
One deputy.
Okay, so we're still discussing the 5:00 PM before, did you wanna speak on that, Mr. Reiser, or were you?
That answer, yeah.
Oh, okay. People are going around. Do you have a question?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I think one thing we're not paying, not putting into the equation is, at five o'clock, we're actually having more people log in. If I'm at work, especially as a teacher, when I was a teacher, at nine o'clock, I couldn't log in and watch it, but at five, I could. So, even if I'm not sitting with my body out in the audience, I'm watching it online, live and watching it happen. So, I think that's something we need to think about. I film and have always been for five o'clock because this new nine and five still kicks teachers out because the nine line is not during school. So, we're still kinda kicking out a whole section of people that I think is, would be beneficial to sit on this board. My opinion.
Okay, are you all, is, is there any other comments on this particular amendment? Because, uh, the amendment to the rule will only take the majority vote. Um, we're not voting to approve the entirety of the resolution at this point. Mr. Jones?
Well, to be fair, give everybody a chance to vote on what they want. Could we amend that to be AM, PM, or hybrid? You vote on which of the three you want, knock out the bottom.
Well, I, I gotta, gotta follow the process where we've got an amendment on the floor for 5:00 PM. Let's just see what else. Are we ready to vote on that? We didn't, we have to do a software thing, yeah? Please vote. Yes, yes is for moving it to 5:00 PM consistently for 12 months.
The vote is eleven eyes and seven noes.
And one abstain? Okay. So, that motion carries. So, now the discussion ensues as to the resolution, which is now for consistent 11 months out of the year for 5:00 PM meetings. Mr. Reed?
Oh, wait a minute, this, this, you're waiting for a motion.
I'm sorry?
You're wanting a motion.
Yes, sir. Well, we've amended it. Yeah, now we have to address this.
Yes, making motion to have the meetings at 5:00 PM year round.
Okay? And a second from Mr. Rubelsky. Okay, so, this will take a 14-member passage to change the rule to meet at 5:00 PM. Are there other comments? Mr. Reed?
Yep. If this fails, we go back to the original motion, correct? Half a minute.
Yeah, we, we can do that. That will require another motion. Yes, sir. Any other comments? Please vote.
That is, um, thirteen eyes and six noes.
Okay, so that motion fails. So, we're back to the original motion of, uh, Mr. Reed, which was six months at 9:00 AM and six months at 5:00 PM. That's the original motion that is still there. I'm sorry, I need to take the motion in a second again. We've, we've lost, we've lost the softeners. You got it? Okay, Mr. Reed, make the motion, and Dr. Laker second it. So, we have it. So, any comments or discussion on the resolution as it was, as it's written and within your package? Mr. Rubelsky?
I do, I, I would just like to hear on those that voted against this, what their feelings and thoughts on it.
Okay, that's, that's, that's up to you all. Mr. Rubelsky is just, uh, posing the question. If, if you voted no, if you'd like to provide comment, that's, if you're willing, if you're willing, please, please do so. Yes, Mr. Womble?
So, just for clarification, if this, this vote passes with the two-thirds, we're gonna stay permanently with the six morning and six evening.
That's correct.
And if this fails, it will fall back to the 9:00 AM period. So, that's what we're voting on.
Yes, exactly so. Everybody understand that? Yes, Dr. Laker?
Just to be clear, we're saying this is a permanent thing, but actually, we could change it at any time.
You could change it again, correct? So, these are your rules, requires two-thirds votes and change it?
Yeah. I would like to see us try another year of the 9:00 AM, 5:00 PM split.
Okay, if there's no other comments, please vote.
Will we vote then?
Okay. A yes vote is to change the rules permanently so that you are meeting at 9:00 AM for half a year and at 5:00 PM for the other half. It would be continuation of what we're currently doing. A no vote is to revert back to the rules that you had before the provision came into use. All meetings would be 9:00 AM.
Seventeen eyes and two noes.
Okay, so that motion carries. So, nothing to the rules, and I will send that out to everybody via email this afternoon. Okay, moving along to Resolution 2023-53. This is the resolution to commit the county to a 7.5% grant match to a maximum of $375,000 to construct a spec building and broaden economic opportunity in Giles County. The total grant is up to $5 million from Tennessee's Office of Economic and Community Development. This will be a joint project with the city of Gilaskey in partnership with our EDC, as Mr. Reed's discussed with us enough in the meeting. Uh, so the floor is open for a motion. Mr. Womble? Motion to break. And a second by Mr. Jones. Comments or discussion? Ms. Jones?
Um, section two, it says that if an eventual sale of the, uh, speciality building, the EDC shall consult the commission on any further potential investments of the county's investment principal. Um, I would like to amend this motion to state, um, clearly that the county's 15% investment may return to the appropriate county fund. And then, you always negotiate with the EDC if there's another investment opportunity, but I'd like it to be very clear that the, uh, 15% investment comes back to the, to the county, uh, to the appropriate county fund.
Okay, so it's a motion to amend?
Yes.
Or second?
Seven five percent. Sorry, that's seven five percent.
That's okay.
Yeah, you're talking about the seven and a half percent up to 375.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Hopkins?
I second.
Seconding that amendment. Are there any comments or discussion on revise? This is, this is the proposal, to revise the resolution so that at the conclusion of the sale of that spec building, that the county's principal would return to fund balance. Okay, Mr. Womble?
I, I don't really understand how, how it works, but a lot of times the buildings are sold to the industrial development board, which is not really being sold out of county. Could this bill is still here? Yeah. Could, could you explain the sale, the potential sale of this building?
Sure. Can I, come on forward, Mr. Reed, thank you.
Yeah.
If there are questions, I'd like to speak.
Yeah, Mr. Womble's correct. I mean, you know, it really depends on, I mean, when I look back at the deals that have been done in the past, it, it goes a different way, right? A lot of times it does go to the IDB and then basically, you know, there are these pilot programs that are put together, and then again, we have to approve by the city and the county, uh, where, you know, they'll, they'll pay initially for a few years all the school taxes, but then some of the, uh, personal, uh, tax above that, they don't pay for some period of time to provide them some incentive to come to our county versus going somewhere else, because that's basically what these other counties do. You know, there's state incentives, but then also local incentives. So, in some cases, there could be, you know, when you sell to them, it may not be a sell outright. It may be to the IDB if we continue to own it and lease it to them for some period of time, uh, before it actually goes over to them after the pilot expires. And so, some of it is more of a timing question around when that sale actually takes place. But eventually, the idea would be that we would sell it and get funds back out of the building. It's just a question of timing. I think I'd like to amend Gail's amendment, um, to exclude a sale to, an inter-county sale to the industrial development board. I don't think a sale to industrial development board should trigger a repayment of our money at that time. I think a sale to an end manufacturer should trigger payment, return of our investment.
Okay, so, to put that in the form that everybody understands what we're voting on, this would be an amendment to Ms. Jones's amendment that a sale to the IDB would not trigger the return of the county's principal.
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second to that amendment? A second by Ms. Pruitt. Okay, any comments or discussion on that particular amendment? Is there confusion on that? Okay. The amendment that Mr. Womble's putting forward is that, uh, if the spec building were to be sold to the IDB, which is often used as a clearinghouse, that would not trigger the return of the county's principal. It would only be when the IDB sells it to a company or an industrial facility. That's, that would trigger when the money comes back to the county. Okay? Mr. Adams?
But we do get our money back.
Not into this amendment yet, okay? I've got an amendment to an amendment, so we're just kinda working our way through these layers. Are there any other comments or questions on Mr. Womble's motion? Yes, Ms. Jones?
If it would clarify things, I would change my amendment to include what, uh, what David Womble just said.
Okay, well, that clarifies that we're only dealing with one amendment then. If we're gonna, if we're doing that, we're sending your previous motion, we'll just go with that amendment, which is that, say again, uh, the amendment to this is that if the spec building is sold to the IDB, that does not trigger the return of the county's principal until that sale goes through with an industrial facility. And that would then come back to the county. I'll figure out how to word it in the resolution. That's what you're voting on. Okay, so I've got a list of people that wanna speak. Mr. Reed? Okay, Mr. Reiser?
Where would they, where would this spec building be at?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Where would it be built at?
It's, uh, lot, you wanna?
Lot five in the Dan Spear Industrial Park South.
Yes, sir. Ms. Currie?
Mine was back in the original.
Sorry.
Resolution.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion? Yes?
Well, I, I'd make the, uh, motion, you know, to, to accept David Womble, but then the second hasn't been made yet to, to the new motion.
Okay, second by Ms. Fedora. Yeah, I think we had Ms. Pruitt down as, as a second. Okay. So, this vote is just to deal with this particular amendment, okay? Not the entirety of the resolution. Does everybody understand what you're voting on? Okay? Okay, please vote. What do you have?
I have a question. What is the case if they have, they decide to rent it out to someone? It just seems like, you know, I've heard of hundred-year leases and whatnot, we would not be seeing our money at all, or would they?
Or rental, yeah, that's not, we haven't addressed that. Do you have anyone address that? Mr. Reeves?
Yeah, I mean, generally, these pilots are five to 10 years, they're not a hundred-year lease, I think. And it's, I think we're talking, we're talking 10-year plus or minus kind of.
Did they then buy it?
Generally, they do that after pilots.
So we're gonna wait five, 10 years, get our money back.
And just create a lot of jobs and make that.
Okay, any other comments for the general group? Okay, please vote, this is just on the amendments.
Seventeen ayes and two noes.
Okay, so the amendment passes and carries. Now we need to consider the entirety, this is basically, I need another motion in section four. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Womble, second by Mr. Jones to commit the $375,000. Any other comments or discussion on that? Yes, Mr. Rubelski?
I'm just curious, as a timeframe, how long do we think it would take, and I know that's all speculative, to get this sold in a timeframe? Mr. Reeves?
Can I answer? Yeah, you're right, it is hard to say, I mean, for a couple of reasons. One is, you know, if the grant gets approved, we'll find that out at the end of this year, sometime in December, and then we'll have to work through a contract phase, sign the contract with the state, and then construction will start, engineering construction. So we think this process could take 18 months to two years before the building is actually, you know, built. And so, you know, that's, so that's when the marketing comes in place. Now, we'll start, you know, once we know, start construction, we'll start doing marketing and stuff, let the folks know a building is coming, you know, so that we can try to get it sold as quickly as possible. If you're talking a couple of years out before it's available, then there's obviously all kinds of questions around, you know, what's the economic condition like then? But as I shared with the group during work session, you know, the whole reason we want to do this right now is, two reasons. One is because the match requirement is as low as it's ever been, and we'll probably never get this opportunity to get so high a share from state. And the second reason is, if you look in fiscal '23, there were about 33 different RFIs that came through the state by industries looking for property that required a spec building. And so, so, you know, it significantly increases the number of things that we could go after. You know, there's, you know, two to three a month that come in on average that we can't even go talk to if we don't have a spec building made.
Okay, Ms. Currie?
Yeah, I'm going to abstain from this vote, and I just wanted to explain why. I don't think we should ever abstain, but I feel like I have a few reasons. San Associated is the company I work for. We were asked by Barge Design Solutions to sub with them on this application process. We don't do buildings, but we have done a lot of work in the industrial part, so they asked for our help on that. And as far as I know, we've supplied some utility information to them for help on the application, but I did feel like I shouldn't have said anything, so that's why.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Mr. Jones?
I know we have the printout here, but just looking at public data, this, the state's gonna pay 85% of this. This is, the city is paying seven-and-a-half, we're gonna pay seven-and-a-half percent. I think it's only a good investment to do that. We have some guidelines, Gail set some guidelines that we, to ensure we get all the investment back. It might take a little time to get it, but if you look at it, if you read this here, it says our neighboring counties over the last five years have received twice the industrial development that Giles County has received. We've got to get the game. And I'm not for spec buildings. If we had to fund the entire thing, I'd quickly vote no. But if the state is gonna pay 85% of, they're either gonna pay 85% for a Giles County building, or they're gonna pay 85% for a Lincoln County building.
Yes, the county is putting in seven-and-a-half cents on the dollar. It's a pretty good return. Yes?
And the money, amount of money is up to?
It's not to exceed $375,000.
It could be less.
Could be. Any other questions?
Seventeen ayes, one no, one is sent.
Motion carries, and I think that's a big win for the county. Okay, moving to Resolution 2023-54. This resolution is a declaration of support for the First Amendment with a statement that elected official will not establish policies that conflict with the Constitution. So the floor is open for a motion. Motion to hear, motion to approve by Ms. Bedore. And a second by Ms. Goolsby. Okay, the floor is open for questions or comments. Okay, there's a question from Ms. Mathis, or an opinion from Mr. Williams.
Says it's a dress.
So, then asked about the thoughts on this, the only thing, when I first saw this, and Commissioner Bedore, I'm not having the opportunity to speak, that I thought was, I guess, questionable in application, is that the resolution says that Giles County government recognizes that neither federal, state, or local government may impose protocols that conflict with constitutional rights. And then that is mirrored down in the action language. Interestingly enough, on Thursday night, I concluded lecturing on this very topic at U2 Southern here, and in my opinion, the fact is, government quite often does those things. Government quite often places time, place, and manner of restrictions on when you can speak. The fact that in this very meeting, there's a specific time for people from the public to speak without just speaking up in the middle of the meeting, it is a time, place, manner of restriction on freedom of speech. And in fact, if you go through all of the First Amendment freedoms, all of them are restricted in various ways by government. For example, the First Amendment's guarantee of free speech is restricted by prohibiting pornography, accessing, accessible to children, allowing school dress clothes, allowing the establishment of rules and regulations for adult-oriented establishments and businesses. And in fact, from time to time, if you look at the litigation across Tennessee and other states, anytime there is an adult-oriented establishment that challenges whether or not it's a violation of their free speech, that ends up in court, and a lot of times, those are resolved in favor of government. And as far as the establishment of rules and regulations that would restrict the free practice of one's religion, government also passes laws that does that too. For example, we've got laws that prohibit publicity. We've got laws that forbid the use of illegal substances in worship rituals. We've got rules and regulations that require Amish children, Amish children to be educated to a certain level. And as many of you know and have decried to me in the past, there have been court opinions that have been issued to prevent nativity scenes and other religious displays from appearing on courthouse songs and the like. I myself have been involved in two specific cases. One had the honor of Mr. Bedore's firm on the other side, where people claimed that they could not earn income because of religious prohibitions that prevented them from doing that. In other words, they had to live off charity. And in both of those cases, two separate judges, one in Giles County and one in Lawrence County, said, "Too bad, you've still got to pay Giles for it." And you can't just not support your children financially because of that. So that would be my only concern that you would ask for, is that I think this language, I appreciate the spirit of it, it probably could use some tightening. Like I said, I lectured on First Amendment for five hours, and if you saw the brains in my class, that proves that it's pretty complex, a subject that not a lot of people would ask, speaking after that. Thanks for talking.
Yes, it does, and I appreciate your clarification. It just goes to show that we're probably not in a position to be making judgment calls on our First Amendment.
It's complicated. Any other questions? Yes?
Yes. Do you have asked for Attorney General's opinion?
I think there is an Attorney General's opinion that's going to be asked about a specific issue, dealing with free speech, yes.
Okay, so we have no idea when that comes forward.
My understanding is that has to come from either a state senator or state representative's office, and I'm not involved in the political aspect of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Rubelski?
When I look at this, I see a redundancy into a sense of where we're, in a sense of trying to stack a, stack a rule or law on a rule or a law that we already had in the Constitution. So it's a redundancy of that, in the sense of where we should do our due diligence in the first half of upholding the Constitution. And so I don't see a need for such language of resolution as this in this manner.
Mr. Hopkins?
I would simply, simply suggest that this go back to a legislative committee to discuss this in more detail and clarify the issues, the potential problems that Mr. Williams has addressed. I have no problems with free speech by any means, and I'm very thankful we changed some things in our own rules to allow the public to speak before meetings. However, it sounds like this needs a little more clarification. I'm not opposed to it, it's more of, I think we need to spend a little more time looking at this prior to coming through the commission again.
Is that an opinion or a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay.
But I needed to explain it, sorry.
Okay, so there's a motion to send this back to legislative committee? Two or second? Dr. Leifert? Comments or discussion on that? Yes, Mr. Bedore?
Yeah, so the sentence that Mr. Williams takes issue with is verbatim from the Individual Liberty Resolution that we passed almost unanimously for Mr. Savage's. I think his phrase was simply, no matter the health crisis, government recognizes that neither federal, state. I didn't make this sentence up. We had passed this sentence in former resolutions. Something to keep in mind. The first sentence as well, that we took an oath to support the Constitution and the laws that are deemed constitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction. I didn't make that up either. That is word for word from the Second Amendment Resolution that passed with strong support back in '21. I actually had copies of that to hand out just to show you, but, you know, if y'all want to take some more time to consider it, I would recommend, look, getting a copy of that Second Amendment, you know, Sanctuary City Resolution that y'all passed in April of '21, this is where I'm getting that language. And again, the sentence that Mr. Williams points out, we have approved before. I think it's just, I think it's interesting, I guess, today that we have more reservations as opposed to the First Amendment, and that's fine. I just wanted to clarify those two sentences, that this was not crafted by me, this is recycled from former resolutions that we passed and had no issue with.
If I can just state, and I don't know if I'm speaking for anyone else, but I have no conflict whatsoever with any part of the Constitution. I took my oath to that document when I was 17 years old. I do take conflict with certain interpretations of that document, particularly the ones that are controversial and have not been submitted through the Supreme Court. So it's fine for us to have disagreements on interpretations. I don't think we're looking at a 14 to 7 divide on who supports the Constitution and who does not, it's a matter of how we are going to define and interpret our Constitution. And that gets into philosophy, and we're going to have some divisions on that, but that doesn't mean that we're anti-Constitution. So that's, the motion in a second was to send this to legislative. Is there any other discussion on that point, Mr. Rubelski?
Yeah. I too, with what you just said about upholding the Constitution, we've all taken an oath upon that. What I'd like us to think about is when the address of what was being brought up by Mr. Bedore. When we were looking at Caleb's, and you look at the language of how it was written, it was looking at particular freedoms and liberties that were taken away. It was a limiting of government. So it's a sense of that the Constitution is fixed, it is not flexible into that, and that's the reason I say in this language the way this is written, it's kind of redundant because we're like stating a statement. It's not a, into a sense of, it's not what I feel or think, what the Constitution says is what it says, and it is a fixed basis, just like the Bible is, would be a fixed basis of a, an absolute truth.
Ms. Jones?
I would say, I'm voting for the Second Amendment Resolution, I'm voting for the First Amendment Resolution, and I think to be consistent, I'm a buck for this resolution. I don't see that it, I don't see any problem with it actually.
Ms. Jones?
Yeah, I want to ask this question. If we pass this, and it says that Giles County Commission shall, shall not make rules or policies or anything that conflicts with the Constitution, does that mean anybody can just get up and talk anytime they want, we can't make a rule on when they can speak? Does that happen? Are we about to cross a bridge we don't want to cross?
That's when you get into interpretations as to what is an infringement of the Constitution.
It says here we can't make a rule against it.
Excuse me?
It says here, that we, nor shall the Commission institute any rules against the freedom of speech or First Amendment. So what do we do?
Yeah, that's what Mr. Williams was speaking second.
There's rules, we got to have rules, there's got to be rules in place.
Okay, our conversation's kind of gone off course from the actual motion in the second, which is to send this to legislative or not. So is there any other conversation on that point? Okay, on that amendment, there is? Okay, Mr. Savage?
I just wanted to say, the one difference that I find between this resolution and the other two resolutions that Mr. Bedore stated was the Sanctuary City Resolution or the, for guns, was dealing with a specific issue where a specific right was being infringed by specific governments. The resolution that I wrote spelled out specific rights that were specifically infringed upon by specific governments. This resolution is very broad without pointing out any specificity as to how these rights have been infringed upon, and I just feel like, not that I necessarily oppose it, but just, in resolutions like this, I think that a little bit more specificity is warranted.
Okay, so that's kind of an opinion in favor of moving it to legislative, simply. Any other comments or discussion before we vote on that particular point? Mr. Bedore?
Sure. Mr. Reeves asked about the Attorney General's opinion that's been requested. You all know my opinion about one of the issues we've been discussing, but at the end of the day, the Attorney General doesn't create law by writing an opinion. It seems that by asking for his opinion, a formal opinion, we're looking for an opinion in place of all the opinions that we don't want to use, and obviously, that is still just an opinion. In contrast, when a federal judge writes an opinion on the constitutionality of something, that is the law until it's overturned, so I just want to make that distinction.
Okay, please vote on whether or not you would like this to move to the legislative committee. Yes means move to legislative, no means we're going to handle it right here.
Twelve ayes and seven noes.
So the motion carries, this resolution will move to the legislative committee and has time. You need, Mr. Rubelski? Okay, the next resolution is, there's actually two, 2023-55 and 56. These resolutions passed with unanimous support of the Highway Committee to place a speed limit of 30 miles per hour on the Austin-Hall of Road and establish the naming and the limit of 30 miles per hour on the Austin-Hall of Road and to establish the naming of the City V. Ralston Memorial Bridge. I'll entertain a motion to combine these resolutions and vote on them as one. Mr. Rubelski?
I make a motion to combine these two.
And a second by Mr. Hopkins. Any comments or discussion on the combination of those two resolutions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So I'll entertain a motion to approve these motions. Mr. Reiser?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second. And a second by Mr. Savage. Comments or discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Okay, we're loading in the software.
I think aye.
And the motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? Okay, just a quick announcement, uh, Mayor Brenly is hosting a strategic development meeting at First National Bank on Wednesday, the 25th of October at 2:00 p.m. Be good if you can make it. Also, please stand by for an email from me later this afternoon, we're going to do something as a commission on the after war payment. And, uh, otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye. This meeting is adjourned, thank you.